All right, I would like to call to order the June 27th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. Mary, will we do the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Granlin here. Petway?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, we will move to the agenda approval adjustments and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
Can we add item number D, resolution of recognition?
Under action items?
Under action items?
Yep. So item, the motion is to amend the agenda to add action item letter D for resolution of recognition. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Then can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
By Jessica, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our announcements. July 4th, Tuesday is a holiday. The district is closed. July 18th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is a regular school board meeting in the community room. August 8th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting in the community room. And August 15th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM is a school board work session in the community room. Next, we have communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on questions, on requests presented at this time. Time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Dawn, do we have any cards? Nope, okay. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda, which includes the personnel report from June 27th and the workers' compensation insurance renewal that was previously presented. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mary, and a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we will move on to the acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read this and then ask for a motion in a second. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution, whereas Minnesota statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $71,765.68. The monetary contributions, a donation of $1,000 was made to Columbia Academy by Clay and Sunshine Carter for school needs. A donation of $784.74 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Vicki Denzer for the track and field event. A donation of $250 was made to Columbia Academy by Minnesota Association of School Administrators for the Marimba Performance. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. Andrea Cowell, $50. Robert and Frances Yu, $560. Peter Harilla, $500. Columbia Heights Class of 76, $1,000. Daniel and Sharon Justin, $1,000. Catherine Yukima, $500. Dean and Brian Miley, $200. Karma Doge, $250. Richard and Barbara Smith, $500. Janice Olson, $100. Carol and Charles Ofston, $550. Ann and Scott Larson, $200. Columbia Heights Fine Art Foundation, $1,500. Danielle Berg, $2,000. Scott and Laura Martenson, $900. Monarch Bus Service Incorporated, $2,000. The Italian American Club Foundation, Inc., $50,000. Barbara Gavin, $1,000. Pamela Zimba, $300. Elaine Yost, $300. Janet Hallick, $300. And Megan Nelson, $525. Value and Kind, donation of Walmart gift cards was made to Valley View Elementary by Crotz Fit Osiris for family needs, estimated value $300. Donation of Walmart gift cards and blankets was made to Valley View Elementary by Vanessa and Brandon Biernat for family needs, estimated value $100. Donation of feminine products was made to Valley View by Period Kits Minnesota for student needs, estimated value $300. Donation of bicycles was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by the Columbia Heights Police Department for student needs, estimated value $2,500. Donation of two Chromebooks was made to Columbia Heights High School by Nazia T. Calderon for student needs, estimated value $450. Donation of musical, music instruments was made to Highland Elementary by Donors Choose for student needs, estimated value $750. Donation of books was made to Highland Elementary by Donors Choose for Highland Media Center, estimated value $704. Donation of storage unit was made to Highland Elementary by Donors Choose for Miss Lunders class, estimated value of $690, $694. The total fiscal year 2022-2023 monetary contributions to date, $188,754.90. That's the resolutions I like when they're really long.
Yeah.
I can a motion to approve that resolution. Move that forward.
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Mary?
I mean, just as usual, again, so thankful for our community that continues to invest in our kids, in our, you know, in the community. It's, it's so appreciated. It's, it's really amazing to see these things come through and especially seeing even current staff donating.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, agreed with what Mary said. Since this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Mary, we call roll, please.
Yep. Granlin, aye. Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we'll do discussion reports and information items, and we'll start with reports from members of the board, and we will start with Jessica.
Sure. So I have a brief report this evening. I attended the Columbia Heights Art and Info Fair, and I just want to say our district was very well represented there. I saw Director Stunkel, meaning the, the district table and talking to folks about the levy and ECFE programs and all the activities we have coming up. Saw several board members there. And then our PTOs were also represented with a table, talking to families, which was cool to see. And then I attended, like all of you, the special call and work session last week, and I had additionally, between the last meeting and this meeting, multiple conversations with community members and many of the board members around the table. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Mary?
Sure. So like Jessica, I attended the work session and the two special call sessions right before that. And I attended jamboree where we got rained out. It was fun. And then when the sun came out, it was a wonderful time. I got a lot of requests for tattoos. So, it's heartbreaking a little bit. Not really. It was great. The kids were fantastic. It was really wonderful to see so many people out. And then a lot of conversations with community members, students, and staff, and especially even after the parade and the jamboree all weekend. So a really wonderful time. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
So, I also attended the Columbia Heights Art and Info Fair, and I did see Member Maderas there. Your son is so adorable. He's so quiet. But yeah, it was very fun, and I got to meet a lot of community members. And I took my daughter. She also had a good time there. They had a lot to do. She got to walk a llama. So that was a first time experience for her. That was interesting. I also attended last week's two special meetings and work session. I also attended the jamboree parade with some of us, well, most of us. And I attended the carnival as well, twice. I went Friday and Saturday. I went once with my daughter and then the next day with my husband. So we kind of split it up a little bit and had some fun both days. The fireworks were amazing. And I'm very happy that it didn't rain so that they could do them. So it was, it was very nice to see them up close. It was really well done. And I've had conversations with board members and community members and city council members, and just like others here. That's all for me.
Excellent. Thanks, Michelle. Julie?
Just attended last week's work session, and that's it.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I also attended the special call meeting, chair meeting prior to that, and the jamboree was a lot of fun. The rain was a little bit dramatic. It really was coming down out there. But it was really great to see people coming out, and some people were prepared. They even had like little, like, you know, covering. I guess they were expecting the rain, so some people stayed dry. But a lot of people came out anyway. That was, that was a lot of fun, and it was really nice to walk in the shade for a change. You know, that was, that was really good. So that, that was really great. I also attended the, the chair meeting just prior to this. Other than that, I really don't have much else to report.
Thank you. For my report, I also attended the chair meeting last week prior to our special called meeting, as well as the work session. I also got to participate in the jamboree parade, and I think our students were big troopers, standing outside in the rain until we had to send them back. Learned a lot for next year. What will be differently for next year is great, like keeping the bus there. But it was great to see so many students who wanted to be out, and it was still great to see our community members who made it there. Also attended the chair meeting just prior to this, had conversations with Member Granlin and Member Maderas and Superintendent Stenvik and community members. Next, we have our superintendent's report and correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik?
Yes. So we've begun the early stages of our annual audit, and I had the chance to meet with our new auditing firm to discuss the process. So we're starting earlier than we have typically done in the past. Executive Director Niambue and I met with the high school and middle school administrative teams to discuss and review the master schedules for the 2023-24 school years, art school year. Last night, in this room, we hosted the district finance committee. Really appreciate the presentation that Director Henneken's gave on district finances to community members, parents, local business leaders, and staff. I also met with our new American Indian Program staff person, Yolanda Dor Slowey, and so we're in the midst of planning for next school year. I've attended multiple presentations on the implications and impacts for the 2023 legislative sessions on our, on school districts in general, and so there are many modifications that we will be making to our policies along with additional compliance pieces. We haven't entered into contract negotiations with our teacher union, Local Number 710, so ongoing. And I concur that the jamboree parade was rainy and fun. But we also had many communicate, community members here on campus searching for the medallion. Some of the tasty pizza clues that led many community members here to our site, and it was really fun to engage with them and hear where they were guessing that the medallion would be. So it was great to see community members out and about. And since our last board meeting, I had conversations with Chair Mueller, Vice Chair Palmer, Member Petway, and Member Granlin, mostly while it was raining at the parade. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Superintendent Stenvik. Next, we'll move on to the Minnesota School Board Association membership with me. So it is time for our annual renewal of our MSBA membership. That information is in Board Book. The, the actual membership dues for the 2023-2024 school year has increased by $40 from last year, and that's due to that, that number is based on enrollment. So they calculate that number based on the average daily memberships of students served for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2022. The, we also subscribe to the Board Book piece of that, which is how we do our meetings and get that information out. That amount is, or let me back up. The first amount was $8,796 for the annual membership. Board Book is an additional $2,100. That has not changed from last year. We also are part of their subscription for the policy services, and that was $750, and that has not changed from last year. So we will be voting on this at our next meeting to approve the MSBA membership. This, the MSBA has been a very valuable organization for us to be a part of, including our trainings that we're doing, resources, and I will be honest, like as chair, kind of newer chair, the amount of times that we have consulted with MSBA as things have come up and have had meetings with them, it has been extremely helpful, even just yesterday. So it has been very valuable for us as a district. Does anybody have any questions on the membership? Jessica?
I just have a question about the Board Book subscription, and just wondering if we have, if the district runs into any issues with Board Book, what kind of support do we get? Does that come through MSBA as part of the subscription, or?
Yeah, Superintendent Stenvik?
Well, Dawn Hoyam is really the person who, who works with them, but when Board Book upgraded to this newer version, you know, of course Dawn had been working with the previous version of Board Book for many, many years and noticed some things that could be improved, and they were, and please chime in, Dawn, but they were very quick to respond and made changes into the program that she had requested.
They're very supportive. I can send them an email and have answers in the half hour.
Wow.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, great questions. Mary?
I guess one question for me, just thinking about this. If we were to ever go to another system, what would happen to the, how many years are we, yeah, the archives, and how many years would be required to hold them? Just, yeah.
So luckily Director Henneken's is also in the room, but we've moved to other systems, not necessarily Board Book, but for example, with professional development, and so our tech department works with the organization, and they're able to archive it and provide us access. Like, we get to have our files.
Wonderful.
And I would, is that right? Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you.
I should have brought these two up there. Appreciate the support. Thank you. Any other questions? If anything comes up, let us know. Otherwise, we'll vote on that at our next meeting. Next, we'll move on to our action items, and the first action item is the 2023-2024 budget. Director Henneken's?
We get to action items so fast.
Listen, we've had a lot of really long meetings lately.
It wasn't really a day with you guys. I'm just kidding. Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. This evening for action, I have the preliminary budget for the 23-24 school year, and this budget was presented in detail at the last school board meeting on January 20th. And I think there was a healthy discussion on, on the preliminary budget. I'm going to pop it up on the screen here and share it. So I can just go through some, some highlights real quick here. There's lots of things in my way here. Hold on one second. Hide the panel. And hide the controls. Okay. And zoom in. Okay. Oops. I got out of the Zoom meeting here. Is it showing? Okay, no, it's good. All right. So with the preliminary budget, on the left-hand column here is our projected June 2023 balance. So this is based off of a revised budget that the school board approved. We're not quite at the end of the year yet, and we won't have a close on the fiscal year '22 or this current school year that just ended until December. When that comes to the board, well, not it comes to the board, that'll be the final really close on that year. And so that put us at a fund balance, that unassigned fund balance of $1.9 million. And so that puts us at about a four point, or 5.2% to 5.4% fund balance, depending on, you know, where those expenditures really end up. So again, ending in '22, FY '22's year, we were at a 4.2 fund balance. So ending in FY '23, our predicted is to, again, incrementally move us back in that fund balance policy at a 5.2 to 5.4% percent fund balance. And then in this preliminary budget, we're looking at bringing us back into the fund balance policy, which will end, now we're talking about fiscal year '24, so at the end of next school year. So this is the preliminary budget for next school year. Just want to make sure that that was clear. So it's not ending this right now currently back in the fund balance policy. It's after next school year. And so at least for that general fund, that unassigned number, that's what we were looking at. So for this year, total revenue of $42,900,000, and total expenditures of $41,800,000. So that net gain in, in fund balance of about $1 million. Again, ending in that fund balance of around $3 million at the end of next school year is, is where we're looking for our preliminary budget. And again, that puts us back over our fund balance policy around that 7%. And then, so I'm going to back down here. I want to pull up, point out just a couple of things quick for the board again. This number here in that compensatory aid, EL, aid number, we have a decent increase in that area through this last legislative session, and also due to the free and reduced numbers within the school district this year. And then the other big number to point out, which is actually a much smaller number, which is in this grants area, at just over $2.3 million. That's a drastic decrease in that grants area due to COVID falling off. So we see about a 60, 65% decrease in, in funding in that area due to those COVID dollars falling off. So even though we've seen an increase in some of those other areas through this legislative session, again, we're seeing that drastic decrease in those COVID dollars, those grant dollars. So all told, in the general fund here, after you have those restricted area numbers and the unassigned numbers at the top, we're at about a $59.5 million revenue and a $58.2, almost $58.3 million expense. So then the total within those restricted areas, which again, isn't the number that we use for fund balance, but about $4 million. One other note with this revised budget, we'll look at food service real quick here. So food service, at the end of this year, looking at about $1 million in fund balance, which is still a little high for our food service program. We do have a project that's going to start real soon that will kind of be one of the key things in spending down a little bit more. So we do predict to be under $1 million in fund balance for food service. Again, a healthy budget, or healthy reserve for food service. Community education, we kept coming in, predicted about $200,000 in, in a fund balance. And then our expenditures and revenues this year at this point predicting down. There's a couple of things that we don't know, particularly the 21st Century Learning Grant, which is almost a $300,000 a year grant. So we're not showing any of those revenues and expenses in this because we just don't have those funds. So those, that programming won't run, and we won't see those expenses. We predict to spend down that fund balance about $50,000, a little over $50,000 in this next fiscal year. The construction fund, Fund Six, that's that capital projects levy that we have. And typically, we're spending each year what we have. Sometimes it ebbs and flows a little bit, depending on how that project ended. Did it get delayed by rain? Did it get delayed by shipping, you know? So lots of reasons it can get delayed and rolls into the next fiscal year, and then that fund balance could be there a little bit. So, but typically, we'll see, we'll see that, that revenue and expense pretty much match. So we don't, we don't, we're predicting basically a flat, no, no increase to that balance moving forward through after this year. The debt service, that number has shrunk for us because we do have debt that fell off the books. So that is a decrease in that area, but we still have a healthy balance within the debt service area. So not a lot of change there. Our internal service fund, dental, still has a healthy balance, just under $100,000. We have a little bit of increase in expenses, a little bit increase in revenue in that area, but that typically is a flat in and out. Our expenses pretty much match our revenues. And we're predicting that for this year, just because of the, even though our rates went up a little bit, and we'll see that revenue grow up a little bit because we're self-insured in this area. I should have said that first. So that fund balance is very important there. We will, I, we do predict to see increase in expenses in that area in this next year. And then the OPEB trust, that irrevocable trust for post-employee benefits. Again, we typically predict in and out expenses and revenue match, and you know, all depends on where the market ends up. You know, we, last year, we, we saw a hit and a decrease in there, but it's still well-funded and no concerns there whatsoever with that trust. So total for next fiscal year, we're looking at $67,751,316 revenue, $66,698.102 in expenses, so $1,053,214 in a surplus that goes partially, you know, if, there's some more negatives down here, but increasing that total with all funds to $10,426,529. So that is the preliminary budget for FY '24, so next school year. Any questions? Additional questions?
I was wondering about, do we have enough of a cushion in our fund balance now to reduce the likelihood of cash flow borrowing?
Yes, it's a very good question. Getting up into that 7% range, now this is again for next year. So you know, there could be, we don't have a, a good prediction because it, it really is going to depend on enrollment. But we're looking to be positioned well to not have to cash flow borrow next year. You know, our, since our debt, some of that debt dropped off, our debt payments in January that hit are less by eight, almost $900,000.
Okay.
So that's that typical timeframe when we have a cash flow issue because we get those incremental.
January, that's what I keep thinking about. It's January. This isn't coming in until this date, and this has to be paid a week prior.
But I, I think, again, given this and giving how we're increasing at the end of this year, we're situating ourselves in a much better position. And then, of course, student enrollment, you know, as that progresses through next year, can be an indicator as well for us, so of where we'll end up. But at this point, you know, it's looking a lot better. Like, that won't be a situation we have for next year.
Okay. Well, I know it was just off by a couple of days last year. We might not have had to have done it, but it would have been nice to have that cushion and not have to spend that money.
Yes.
Julie?
I just have a quick question for anybody else who's watching. So we're self-insured on dental, and I know that we only have about $100,000 of balance that we could tap into if it went over. Our estimates are over. What happens if we end up overspending in that area? Where does it come from?
It would come from the general fund.
Okay.
So.
So it comes out of our teaching, our, all of that. So I just wanted people to understand that when we're self-funded, one of the things that we, we want to do is have a cushion there so that we can pay out any claims for insurance. So just to let people understand that.
Yes, thank you. And, and there are districts this year that took a very big hit for self-insured, for, for medical, and, and took a tune of millions of dollars into their fund balance because of large claims coming in and that they just didn't have a plan for post-COVID. So dental's a lot less risk for us, and, but yeah. So dental is a lot less risk for us and, but yes, that, if the fund balance wasn't there for that fund, it would come from general fund.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We've had a lot of discussion about the impact of legislative session and the appropriations for the next biennium. And you went through some of those impacts, particularly in the restricted categories. And I'm just wondering if you could speak generally to the impact of the increase in the funding formula and sort of where that shows up? What pressures is that sort of beating up against? How does that show up in our preliminary budget?
Sure. So the, the four percent, the general formula increase. And then the other thing that's the largest increase in that area would be the revenue that we're receiving additional for the cross-subsidy. So that additional forty, or the, they're currently covering six point four, six five or something, a little over six percent of the cross-subsidy. That's the state aid that we get for that cross-subsidy for special education. So that special education expense, let's just say it's at twelve million and, and we're, they're funded to six million, six million dollars is the cross-subsidy. It's the unfunded part of educating our special education population. And they were paying, they were giving us aid on over, just over six percent of that and which is not very much money. And they've increased that to forty-four percent. And so, so the four percent increase in the general formula and then that cross-subsidy aid, so lowering that cross-subsidy and again, that unfunded component is, comes from the general fund. So it's, it's not that, there's still not a lot of unfunded costs there, it's just there's less of it now. And so that's showing up in that unassigned number at the top. So that's where we see that forty-two million, nine thirty-one. And it's, it is, you know, our, that four percent can give our district around a million dollars in additional revenue. And, and then, and so, but we have to remember with that, and then we have the cross-subsidy, which is just around an additional two, a little over two million dollars. But we did drop four and a half, four point seven million dollars in grants. So we have a hefty drop there. And so this year, we do have additional revenue total over last year and which is, is helpful in the sense of, one, increasing the fund balance and getting back into fund balance policy, but two, we have some drastic areas of increase in costs that are coming. We have contract negotiations, so those labor costs, staff or salaries and benefits that are, that are there. And we have to, you know, be able to support those things, be able to support, you know, the previously approved transportation amendment for an increase eleven point four percent. Property liability was over twenty percent last year. This year, predicting mid-teens and increase. So there's a lot of increased inflationary costs that are coming. And, and so it's, it's, it's a good one-time revenue increase, you know, mainly on the back, I think, of that special education cross-subsidy. And at least on that, on the signed area, that's, that's helpful for those, those increases and that drop off of those COVID dollars, but it's still not, it's, it's still just getting us, ticking us into our fund balance policy. So we're, we're not sitting above our fund balance policy, you know, which is six to twelve percent. We're not in it right now. This just gets us into it.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for your diligence and for always reminding us about how those COVID dollars are not here to stay. You know, I've been on the board since 2020 and I think every time that you've come up, you've reminded us. And I think that that's a good thing, especially as we see districts around us who had, apparently did not have as much diligence to that and now are suffering a massive debt that puts them in jeopardy. So I just want to say thank you for that. It's never repetitive. It's really important. And I think that because of that, we've been able to make some smart choices and work really hard. And that shows in things like our bond rating. And, and I think it's really important for the community to also see that we are being really diligent about it. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have an additional comment. And thank you very much for all the work that you do with us to be able to maintain our credit rating. So should we need to do any type of short-term borrowing or anything like that, that it won't, it won't impact the district at quite the same level? Even though we were below our fund balance, I know that they took that into consideration, but because of your diligence on, on being able to have a plan for maintaining that, you were able to maintain our rating and that's, that's a big win.
All right. Thank you, Director Hennekenz. This is an action item, so we need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four preliminary budget.
So moved.
Motion by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Jessica.
I just wanted to note that while this is an action item at today's meeting, we did have this presentation and significant discussion at the work session last week. So this isn't the first time the board has, has had the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hennekenz. Next, we have Director Tuckrel for the federal title grants.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stendick. I'm here tonight recommending approval of the preliminary federal grants for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four school year as presented at the June thirteenth school board meeting.
Thank you, Director Tuckrel. Can I get a motion to approve the federal title grants preliminary funding for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? All right, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Tuckrel.
Thank you.
Next, we have a teacher request for contract exception. I received an email from a teacher who started at Columbia Heights in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty, excuse me, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. The current negotiated contract states that experience up to ten years, prior experience up to ten years is included in considering their starting salary. The contract also states that a board at its discretion may consider prior years' experience. So all of you received a copy of the email that was sent to me where this teacher has requested our consideration for their years of service beyond ten years. I think that is all the information that I have presented. That would anybody like to make a motion regarding this?
Make a motion to?
So what we have to do, so this was, thank you, Laura. So this was brought to the board for decision. If we would approve or deny the prior years of teaching experience beyond the maximum as outlined in the local seven-ten collective bargaining agreement.
So we make a motion to open this up for discussion or are we making a motion to approve?
So we would make an motion to either approve or deny the request. And then, once that motion is made, if it's seconded, then we would discuss.
Okay. I make a motion to deny the prior years of teaching experience beyond the maximum outlined in the local seventeen, seven-ten collectively bargained agreement.
Okay. So we have a motion to deny the prior years of teaching experience beyond the maximum as outlined in the seven-ten collective bargaining, bargained agreement. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Julie. End discussion.
Can I make a comment here? I actually see this as being administrative detail and not board decision as we only hire the superintendent, you know. So I, I personally feel that it, it puts us into uncharted territories with interfering with contracts, especially with individuals. I don't know if anybody else has any other, it's just that, that's the way this feels to me, that this should be handled by administration with a direction from the superintendent, who is our only employee.
Mary.
I think one thing for me, and actually, I've talked about this a lot and got a lot of community questions about this. And for me, I think, you know, I absolutely agree, Laura, like especially in a year when we're negotiating contracts, it feels really unfair that we are, as a team, we have our negotiating team and the local seven-ten negotiating team working on the contract for everybody and we have one person coming to us. And that feels, like you said, it feels much more at the management level and not at governance. And I, it pains me to say that. And I think also beyond that, the thing that I'm considering is that, you know, we just got the, the financial year prelim budget for the next school year and we, we have to be really thoughtful. We have a fiduciary responsibility. And while I would absolutely love to increase all teachers' pay and take into account all of their experience and do all those things, we can't do that yet. We were really, really close to, to a lot of, like that cash flow borrowing was incredibly hard. And we don't want to be in that position again because that ends up putting us in a spot where we are not able to support our, our learning community. And yeah, this was a really hard decision for me and I did a lot of, a lot of thinking and discussing. So that would be why I put forward the motion to deny it. So, thanks.
I just want to point out from a technical standpoint, this individual did agree to the original contract and is now coming back afterwards saying, you know, from an intense standpoint, this, this wording is not quite, you know, what I anticipated or whatever. And I'm not sure that the argument is there. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I sit here, I, wording can be misinterpreted, but it seems like everybody else interpreted the correct way. And if we, if we give into one request like this, we may have to give into all, and we just don't have the money to do that. So I just think that, and it makes sense, like Laura said, that this is probably more of an administrative function because Xena is our, excuse me, Superintendent Stendick is our only employee and this is an employee issue. So just my point.
I was wondering if I can make a further, further comment. The truth is, is that we really, really do value experience and we really wish that, that, that we could compensate people for what they're worth. But this is, this is something that needs to be handled within the contract and within the bargaining, you know, because that language needs to apply to everybody, especially when we're dealing with, with a collective bargaining. You know, that's, that's where this discussion belongs, not at this board table.
Jessica.
Well, I don't disagree with much of what has been said. I do just want to note that this is before us because of the language in the contract. So whatever we might feel about what that language is, I mean, that is the language and to Laura's point, that is collectively bargained for. We take those negotiated agreements very seriously. So I just wanted to, to note that piece. I do think that from an equity standpoint, it's really important that we are treating similarly situated teachers appropriately. And I think that to, in my mind, this does raise like a systemic question that is larger than an individual, the individual teacher exception request that's before us. And Laura, you had noted that too. So I think maybe that's something that would ultimately be something to be considered in the future when we're looking at how we remain competitive, when we're looking at how to retain staff that have valuable expertise and bring that with them from outside. But when I look at the request that's before us today, my concerns are really about parity and about precedent. And some of the parity concerns have already been voiced by others around the table, but I do think there are, I can contemplate perhaps a situation in which there would be extenuating circumstances that would, you know, merit discussion and an exception. But I, I think that absent extenuating circumstances, that parity concern is, is a paramount one. And I get, again, I don't think that that addresses the systemic issue that this particular exception brings to light, but that's where we find ourselves. And then, again, just looking at, at precedent, I think it would be, I think we would run the risk of putting the board in a situation where we're asked to make exceptions and essentially enter into individual contracts that, that are outside of what seven-ten has negotiated for. So again, I do think this raises a larger question. So in that way, I'm glad that that's been brought to light and we're made aware of that. But I think in this particular situation, since we don't have, you know, criteria or precedent on how we would make the decision, that's, that's how I'm thinking about this. And like many of you have spent a lot of time, you know, considering this request seriously in light of those factors. So thank you.
Me, that was pretty much where I was going with it, that we don't want to put that forward and then have to accommodate the same thing for other people. I feel like you may have mentioned that before, but yeah, we want to be fair to everyone, but we also know that it's not always across the board for everyone. But I didn't see anything that was like specific to this, that, that we needed to accommodate this specific person, you know, with this.
Should this language remain in the contract following negotiations? I really think that that should come up before the policy committee and work with administration to make sure that we have a policy because that's the part that we're, we don't have right now. And I think that that would be really beneficial. I think this is also one of the things that as we do set policy and we remind ourselves a lot, like this isn't always just for now, this is for the future. And are people going to understand why we came to these decisions? And this is absolutely one of those times where some time ago, this decision was made and we don't know why or how and we don't have any roadmaps of how to navigate this. And that's the part, the precedent part is really important too. So, yeah.
Thank you. I, after receiving this email, I had done some research and read more teacher contracts from more school districts than I would care to admit at this point. But I think I went to look at seven or eight different contracts. And the, there is language in most of them in terms of prior years of, of service, prior years of experience, from eight years with just one of our immediate neighbors up to, you know, twenty years. And then different contextual language, but it's very outlined in the contract. So I appreciate this being brought to the board because I think it can be something that we can look at and consider because we want highly qualified staff members. From, you know, I'm, I'm not going to speak for the board, but speak for the board and say that we have had conversations about, you know, when we met about the budget at our work session, had conversations about making sure that our staff is, is compensated and making sure that we're hiring and retaining quality staff. So I think definitely taking that into consideration as well. But taking a look at the, at the, the request here upon us, I, I would state many of what you have already stated. Any further discussion? All right, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. The motion before us is to deny the prior years of teaching experience beyond the maximum. And as we proceed to vote, I would like to request a roll call vote. Mary, would you roll call please?
Yep.
Grandland, aye. Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Cool?
Aye.
Cool?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Next, I can't forget, because it's not on Board Book, because we like to surprise Dawn every now and then, and when she makes the agenda, we have to get a little tricky. So action item D is our resolution and recognition of Dawn Hoyam. Today is Dawn Hoyam's last board meeting as our executive assistant, and I'm hoping that maybe she'll come and visit us at board meetings and heckle us from the from the back row.
Fill out a blue card.
Yeah, fill out a blue card. She is a community member. We did some back-of-the-napkin math, and Dawn has attended over 500 school board meetings. So that's, yes, that is, that is a lot. So if any of you think you have attended a lot of board meetings, Dawn has attended over five years, or, excuse me, over 500 school board meetings. I would like to read the resolution and then ask for a motion to move that forward. Oh, I have copies.
No, thank you.
I have extra.
I'm good. It's not in front of me.
We couldn't have it in front of you, or else she would know. Resolution in recognition of Dawn Hoyam. Whereas Dawn Hoyam, executive assistant of the superintendent and school board, is retiring from Columbia Heights Public Schools number 13, and whereas Dawn Hoyam has served as Columbia Heights Public Schools, has served the Columbia Heights Public School District since 1998, and whereas Dawn Hoyam has consistently demonstrated our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, and whereas, in addition to her executive assistant role, Dawn Hoyam served as election clerk, district historian, problem solver, question answerer, and support person, and whereas Dawn Hoyam has been a great leader, role model, and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District number 13, state of Minnesota, hereby acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation and gratitude to Dawn Hoyam for her many years of service and dedication to the Columbia Heights Public Schools, and expresses our sincere wishes for a long and happy retirement.
You're here.
Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion?
Get tons of, tons of discussion. We're really going to miss you, okay? And you must come and heckle us in the background, okay? And and I would love to have one more whereas in here, basically saying, you know, that that we really counted on you, and you came through, you always come through in such amazing ways, and it's like you can read our minds as to what we need next, and you're just very, very important for this district, and you've been a very good friend to me, and I'm really going to miss working with you.
Any other discussion?
You should have went last.
I'm a little bit clamped over here after hearing Laura, and I will say that, Dawn, I certainly appreciate all the help that you do for me in writing resolutions, because I had to pull this one off on my own.
Missed a whereas.
Luckily, I had a template from you, so thank you very much. Before we vote, just really quick, we have something for you as well, so I'm going to pause. This was also a little bit hard to pull off, because you're the one who does all the things.
But look, they're practicing.
All the things.
Come up here, Dawn.
Over there.
Oh, my God.
Laura, you present this with me?
Yes.
Luckily, we have an expert.
I couldn't figure out how you did it. I just said, well, I know it's a black frame, and it's not here.
So we wanted to make sure that you had one for you as well, so.
Thank you. I'm sure I know that, Mike.
The engrave plate, because guess who orders all the engraved plates?
Just got Stephanie's today.
Chair Mueller, can we have a board picture?
Yes, yep. That's great. You did a good job.
Thank you. I've done one or two.
Thank you. This is still our discussion here, so.
We'll take our pictures. They'll do hugs.
Yep.
We have to vote on this, too, though.
Yep, we still have to vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I have to have an extra box of you in my office.
I thought about that, but, well, I couldn't figure out, what are we doing? Well, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how to get the page out of your book.
We may have had other board members send us pictures.
Yes, we may have had that happen.
We have to vote on this.
We do.
That was still our discussion. It's a little unorthodox here. See what happens when Dawn?
I was just going to say that.
Free thing out at the board meeting.
We clearly can't survive without her.
Any other discussion?
I mean, Dawn, I think, like, as a board member, like everybody has said, you've been invaluable, but even before I was a board member, and I was just a community member who was passionate, you always helped me figure out where my concern needed to be directed, you helped me understand why things were the way they were. You were such an important part of our school community, and it extends beyond just those of us sitting here and those of us that work at the district center. You you are a really bright spot in our community, and you better come, I heard Mr. Coolman would sell popcorn outside, so you guys could do that together, it could be a fundraiser, I don't know, but, yeah, I hope that we continue to see you and that you enjoy calling us as a constituent, instead of us calling you always for all the help. So thank you for everything.
All right, with no further discussion, we will proceed to vote, as this is a resolution. Mary, you call the roll, please.
Happily. Grandland, aye. Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Cool?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Congratulations, Dawn.
Congratulations.
Are there any board topics? Mary?
I just want to say Eid Mubarak to our families in our community. It either starts Wednesday or Thursday, I'm not entirely sure, it always depends on when the moon comes out, so it's Eid Aldaha, so, yeah, Eid Mubarak, and other than that, everybody stay cool.
Michelle?
I had a question about, well, I didn't know if you could update us, or someone could, about if families were really opting into the transportation. I was running into a lot of people who didn't know or didn't have access to it, and I know that the only way they were seeing, some people were seeing the Columbia Heights, the June update, was through like Facebook, and they couldn't get to the link through Facebook, they don't know to open it like in their browser. I tried doing that, and it worked, so I tried to like post it out and send it out, but I didn't know if there was another way to send it to families or to like let people know.
Superintendent? Great question.
I love that finger. She's like, I'm here.
Great question, and thank you for bringing up that really important topic. I did meet with Director Hennekenz around transportation, and we are reviewing the numbers. We do have several hundred, not thousand, but we do have several hundred students or families who have enrolled their students. Our, it's pretty clear that our best line of communication is principals to parents, and so that's our next step, which will probably, you know, sometime in July, we, you know, we'll start that, but we'll really promote that in August.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the plan, but thank you.
Thanks.
So if if anyone isn't aware, we're asking families to opt in for transport, for school bus transportation for next school year, so that we can really have a good handle of the roster of who is riding and who's our ridership and membership on the buses, so that we can budget accordingly and plan accordingly.
Because there was like this, I remember, Chair Mueller, you were saying that, you know, we were assigning seats on buses to students who didn't necessarily need it, right? So that was like a thing that we wanted to not do, so that we could.
Part of our efficiency and managing budget.
Got it.
Yep.
Mary?
Can I just ask, so a follow-up question to that is, not every student who goes to our school qualifies for busing, so, I mean, my, I know, I live on on 44th, and my kids would have qualified to go to the elementary school, but it's different, there are different walks, right? So if a family were to apply, you know, and they were not within the boundary exception, we're sending communication back to them about that right away, or, I just want to make sure that people, I don't want people to self, you know, just, I guess, not knowing necessarily where the boundaries are, I would prefer if all families asked and then we were able to give them feedback, or, do you know how that? We do, yeah.
So we're collecting all the information and all of the applications, and families receive a postcard from confirmation from the from the transportation company. So we are collecting all of that information, and then we'll be combing through those those applications and being able to alert families who, for whatever reason, most likely the where they live, a distance to the school, don't qualify for school transportation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on that update from June, there is a number on there for families to call if they want to check and see if they are within the boundary to to receive transportation, too, so just just a note.
Along with, if I may, boundary maps on our website.
Oh, sure, yeah.
All right, thank you. Excellent. Any other board topics? All right, it'll be a couple of weeks before we see each other, but back on July 18th, so right next to board meeting.
Seems so long.
And so I will adjourn the meeting at 8:02.